Good evening, everyone. We call the Tuesday, June 14, 2016. Regular public hearing, regular city council meeting to order. This time I'd ask if you would please rise for our indication tonight. Reverend Alford, Reverend Alford, please deliver our indication, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Sir? Come up front of you.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Don't pass the plate.
I hear you. Let's bow our heads. Loving God, we stretch forth with our hands. We thank you, God, for this opportunity to call upon your name, O God, and visit your people, Jesus, the rulers of the city of Jesus. We thank you, God, for the angels. The Lord, O God, as we go forward in this meeting, O God, we pray your Father for the health of this town, for the decision-making of the Father. We realize, O God, that we've just come to the election, O God, and we pray your Father that all is well. We know that, O God, the changing of the gods, O God, we pray, O God, that our attitude and everything is in depth with love, O God, here in Hartsfield. We thank you for the growth of the city and how you've empowered us, O God. So, Lord, O God, we just thank you, God, as the agenda that's laid before us, O Jesus. That, O God, that you be well pleased, O Father, as we work over it and work through it, O Jesus, that things will be of such. And, O Lord, we just give you glory and honor and praise for what's going to take place as you reveal yourself here in the city of Hartsfield. Be with our leaders in a mighty way, God. For we thank you for Mayor Pennington, for his leadership, and, O Father, those that work beside him. Continue to allow them to lift his hands up and empower him, O God, as we go forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we're sponsored, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please sit. Okay. We have a really lengthy agenda. We're going to dig in, certainly possible. We'd like to welcome everyone. Certainly wanted to just give counsel for those of you who may not have heard an update on Vernice. Vernice, Mrs.? Sharon?
Miss?
Sharon. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, could you give us a good counsel? Or Sharon?
Just want to update on Vernice. That's Karen.
Um, Mr. Wilson's daughter called last night, and he was supposed to have bypass surgery together. He was unable to have that done. He has some other medical conditions they have to get, um, taken care of first. But he is still in the hospital, and he will remain in the hospital after he has his surgery.
He's a?
Had an operation.
Okay.
And he requested everyone to remember him in the prayers.
I'm sorry. Reverend, I need your help on that. So, you know, if you have a chance to reach out to Mary, please, you know, do so. I try to bring them themselves. I mean, I think that it's going straight to voicemail. If any of y'all hear anything, if you do talk to them, Ms. Abilene, if you hear from Mary, please let everybody know so we can stay in touch and help him when he gets home as much as we can. If there's nothing else, move forward. Item three on the agenda is a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes of Tuesday, May 10, 2016, regular city council meeting of Tuesday, June 7, 2016, a special city council meeting. There's such a movement.
Second.
Attorney discussion, hearing, and all in favor, simply by saying aye. Motion period. Item three on the agenda, presentation, I mean, item four, recognition of new hires and promotions.
Not many to my knowledge, sir.
Nothing to mention. Okay. Item B on the agenda, Mr. Wild and Mr. Floyd are here for Tree City Awards, children.
Mr. Mayor, would you let you, uh, come accompany us down here, please? The rest of the council, they've been set up. Do you want everybody?
Sure.
Come on down. The city of Hartsville has been presented with 30 years, 30 years of Tree City Award and our first year of Growth Award. And, uh, we got pretty keen looking at it. We're getting here, man. And without your support and the support of the citizens in Hartsville, this wouldn't have been possible. We, uh, on May the 5th, it's good, we had our first canopy session where we invited all of, anyone interested in community to come in. We had like a little workshop where they could gain some more information on different tree care topics. And we had a pretty well turnout, and hopefully we'll be able to do more in the future as well. And that kind of brings, that was going towards our second year of Growth Awards. And after 10 years of Growth Awards, then we can be a certain community. So that'll put us into another bracket, basically. And like I said, without, without y'all's support and the support of the, uh, the rest of the citizens and all the citizens and staff, this would not be possible, and I thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm pretty sure that the city council has never officially touched a tree, so I thank y'all for what you continue to do to, uh, to keep the trees in good shape. I don't think you need a picture of us. Why don't you two come up here and hold this? And y'all, uh, everybody in council, just get around and come back to, y'all, the other place. You're too pretty not to be in this.
Y'all are going to have to get back here, so.
Yeah, we'll get behind you. But you two, you two are the, certainly the unsung heroes that put this at the forefront, so thank you all.
There's a banner by your hand.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, let's give them a round of applause. And I do have to say, since both of you are here, the planners that y'all did in front of the Mantisah are a model for just about every city to see what perfection looks like on the street. So, thank y'all for that. Next, Madam Chairman from the Parks Committee is here for her annual update.
Seeing a 32-item agenda, I decided that my annual update would be primarily in writing to you, which you have, but wanted to just mention a couple of things. Back in 2012, when we kind of got this, this committee started again, we had some priorities. First one was the splash pad. That's done and improved yearly, and people have lots of fun there. Pride Park upgrade, that's done. The poster gospel in the park is wonderful. Renovate Lawton Park tennis courts, work has begun. Thank you very much. Appreciate that so much, just to see the bulldozers out there. Uh, new priorities were set in a public meeting last November. They were two. One, renovate the Lawton Park tennis courts, because that was kind of still on our docket. So again, that started. Replace the Pride Park bathroom with one like the one in Lawton Park. That's almost totally done. Decent landscaping, I think, around in trees, but it's pretty, it's pretty much done. Another priority that still remains on our wish list from our public meeting is an outdoor basketball court. So, you know, as funds become available, and that seems to be practical, please do keep that in mind. We're delighted that the Veterans Memorial is being repaired, that improvements are made, being made to bury park and put in the bathroom. We just don't stop, which is wonderful. We can't stop. We can't stop and sit back with what we have. We don't stop, and, and it's wonderful. And a thank you again for your support of those projects. It makes working on a committee fun and very worthwhile. Thank you for the staff that you allowed your administrative folks to put together to work with us. They're a wonderful group to help us along, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We appreciate your, uh, your willingness to serve and your leadership, because before you got here, I'm not sure that that committee had met in quite some time. Madam Clerk, it just reminded me that in light of the beginning of the tennis court repairs, that we should draft a letter on behalf of council to thank our anonymous donor. I assume it's anonymous?
It's anonymous.
Yeah. If we could, oh, yeah. Send it to the post office, like you do everything else. So, if you, I know you're going, you're leaving, so when you get back.
Yes, sir.
Enjoy your vacation. Item five on the agenda, the management update, Madam Manager.
That's what I, that's it.
Good.
I think that's the session on the floor.
Okay. Okay. Item only consent agenda will be received as information out of protection and standard approved. Unfinished business. Item six on the agenda is a public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4247. The manager will publish.
An ordinance to adopt a budget for the city of Hartsville, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017.
Hey, you've heard the title and presentation given by the manager. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4247, if you rise, state your name and address for the record, please come to the front limit. Your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4247. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on ordinance 4247? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Close by nay. The ordinance passes. Item seven on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4248. The manager will.
An ordinance to authorize the purchase of land at tax map parcel number 056-08-01-061, consisting of .47 acres for public service complex drainage outpost.
Hearing your per reading of ordinance 4248. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4248, if you rise, state your name and address for the record, please come to the front limit. Your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4248. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Close by nay. The ordinance carries. Item eight on the agenda, uh, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4249. The manager will publish.
An ordinance to amend Hartsville City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 1, Council, Division 2, Meeting, Section 2-71, Core Underholds of Order, and Article 3, Officers and Employees, Division 4, City Attorney, Section 2-244, Attending to Council Meetings.
Okay. You've heard the reading of ordinance 4249. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4249, if you rise, state your name and address for the record, and please let me your comments in two minutes. Come to the front, please, let me your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4248. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Close by nay. The ordinance carries. Item nine on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4250.
An ordinance to authorize the sale of real property of the city of Hartsville located on South Forest Street near the rail passenger station, tax map number 056-06-02-069, consisting of .32 acres and other matters related there, too.
Okay, you've heard the reading of ordinance 4250. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4250, if you rise, state your name and address for the record, come to the front, and please let me your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4248. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Close by nay. The ordinance carries. Item nine on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4250.
An ordinance to authorize the sale of real property of the city of Hartsville located on South Forest Street near the rail passenger station, tax map number 056-06-02-069, consisting of .32 acres and other matters related there, too.
Okay, you've heard the reading of ordinance 4250. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4250, if you rise, state your name and address for the record, come to the front, and please let me your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4258. Is there any discussion on ordinance 4250?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask if and when this deed is, um, I guess, made, will council get an opportunity to review and interject suggestions before it's signed?
Are you asking before you recuse yourself from the vote? Is that influencing the vote in any way?
No.
So you want to look at the deed restrictions prior to?
There, there's language out there that protects national registered property, that is approved of the National Park Service and stuff like that.
We can bring that back before closing. We can bring that back to the July 12 meeting, and the gentleman who's purchasing it will actually be at that meeting as well.
Our understanding for meeting with them is that they want to follow every.
Yes.
Letter of the law as it pertains to the remaining on the national registry, and it's submitted a letter.
That's correct.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay?
Mr. Mayor, let me show you that I do not vote for the Congress.
All right.
So the chair will make a ruling and say that there is no conflict of interest, that you don't stand to profit personally from it? So you're still excused from the vote. Thank you, sir. Uh, the ordinance passes. Um, item 10 on the agenda is first reading, public hearing and final reading, excuse me, of ordinance 4250. The manager will publish.
An ordinance authorizing acceptance of the transfer of ownership of property located 712 South 8th Street, tax map 056-01-14-900, consisting of .602 acres to the city of Hartsville.
Okay, you've heard the reading of ordinance 4251. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4251, if you'll rise, state your name and address for the record, come to the front, please let me your comments in two minutes or less. Seeing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4251. Is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we amend ordinance 4251 and strike the word private after the first whereas.
There has been, there is, let me catch up with you. All right, I'm, um, there's a motion on the floor to strike and remove private in the first whereas, um, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion? Would Mayor Protem care to elaborate on his position?
And I would defer to our council, if he suggested this.
Yeah, this street is not a private street right now. It is actually part of the Southern Park Transportation System. I've discussed it with Mary about, you know, in my opinion, and she agrees that it's better to leave it in the system at this time and consider, maybe take the nap, that we consider private, it might lose that, that stash.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you for the clarification. Um, so there's been a motion and a second rediscussion, all in favor of the ordinance amendment, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? So the ordinance 4252 stands amended now. Are there any further motions on the floor? Hearing none, all in favor of ordinance 4252 as amended, signify by saying aye. All opposed?
4251.
I mean, 4251. All, all in favor of 4251 as amended, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Ordinance 4251 passes as amended. Item 11 on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4252. That'll be finished.
An ordinance to authorize the purchase of land at tax map parcel number 056-11-01-022, consisting of .34 acres from James Beach, Farah, the third.
Okay, you've heard the reading of ordinance 4252. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4252, if you'll rise, state your name and address for the record, come to the front, please let me your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4252. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Likewise, by nay. The ordinance passes. Item 12 on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4253.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 10 Building and Building Regulations, Article 2 Technical Code, Section 10-32 through 10-37, and Section 10-39 through 10-40, and Reserving Section 10-41 through 10-16.
Okay, you've heard the, uh, reading by title and presentation, city manager. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4253, if you rise, state your name and address for the record, please come to the front, let me your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4253. Is there any discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, this is what David discussed with us. I was not here.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing that there isn't, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. Ordinance 4253 passes. Moving on to new business, item 13 on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 4254.
An ordinance to lease to Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless Tower space on the Paul Street Water Tower.
Okay, chair will open. Chair will entertain motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4250. Any further second?
Second.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. The ordinance passes first reading. Item 14 on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 4255.
An ordinance to amend Hartsville City Code, Chapter 14. Positions are applied sidewalk sales and free sidewalk vending. And Mr. Wyndham is here. Do you have any questions?
Okay, um, you've heard the reading of ordinance 4255. Chair will entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4255. There is a motion on the floor. There's a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. The ordinance passes first reading. Did you want to, since you came and sat through, um, this city council meeting, did you want to stand up and introduce yourself and tell the good people what you're doing here? Or is that still a trade secret at this point?
Uh, no, because I've already done three events.
It works for you. Come forward and introduce yourself to everybody else, so they can hear your good news.
Hey, I'm Bradley Wyndham, and I had a business idea a little while ago to start a hot dog vending cart out on the street in Hartsville. Um, city council has helped me out with this, and I'm really looking forward to having it out here. I think it'll add a nice vintage feel to the town.
Thank you. Young entrepreneurship. The mayor, Protem, always told me you wanted to be the mayor, Protem. I'm a big city, and now we have a big city hot dog cart, just like New York, so your wishes grant you every lunch, every lunch. Forget your dogs, these are lean dogs. So, um, thanks for coming. 15 on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 4256. The manager will publish.
An ordinance to approve the sentence for Park Erie High Court, known for a new single-family dwelling located in Strategic Investments, overlay town at 402 Norwood Avenue, tax map
Okay, you've heard the first reading of ordinance 4256. Chair will entertain motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4256. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on ordinance 4256?
Where is that? On the floor.
Okay. There should be a parcel map. Yeah. Maybe, maybe I heard it. It is in Oakdale, California. It's one of the six vacant lots.
One closest, closest to, uh, their first.
Okay. All in favor of ordinance 4256, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. The ordinance carries. Item 16 on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 4257.
An ordinance to authorize the purchase of land at tax map parcel number 056-11-01-009, consisting of .11 acres from Harry C. Wallace Senior.
Okay, you've heard the first reading of ordinance 4257. Chair will entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4257. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item 17 on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 4258.
An ordinance to authorize the purchase of property at tax map parcel number 056-10-01-030, consisting of 1.033 acres from Olive, Timberlake.
Okay, you've heard the reading of ordinance 4258. Chair will entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4258. Is motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by nay. The ordinance carries first reading. Item 18 on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 4259.
An ordinance to authorize the purchase of property at tax map parcel number 056-10-01-029, consisting of .34 acres from James Beach, Farah, the third.
You've heard the reading of ordinance 4259. Chair will entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 4259. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ordinance carries. Item 19 on the agenda, Resolution 6-16-01, approval of a bid award to Northern Industrial Machine for structural repairs to the tower at the fire department. Chair will entertain motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 6-16-01. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution carries. Does it sound like I'm speaking a foreign language sometimes? I just, I feel like I'm one of those auctioneers. Item 20 on the agenda, Resolution 6-16-02, approval of bid award for the Prescott Drive Area Sewer System Rehabilitation Project. Chair will entertain motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass Resolution 6-16-02. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, the chair feels that I should willingly abstain from voting on this, having lived in the Prescott neighborhood for 15 years, and turn the gavel over to the mayor, Protem. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of ordinance 16-16-02, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No second today. There is no opposition. Congratulations. Um, Benner, if you want the record, just recuse myself. Item 21, Resolution 6-16-03, approval of allocation of local hospitality tax revenue to Hartsville Tourism for the benefit of the Darlington Racetrack advising advertising efforts. Is there such a motion?
Second.
Is there a second?
No.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Resolution carries. Item 22 on the agenda, Resolution 6-16-04, approval of distribution of state local accommodations tax revenue. Chair will entertain the resolution. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass ordinance 06-16-04. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Resolution carries. Item 23 on your agenda, Resolution 6- Item twenty-three on your agenda, Resolution Six dash sixteen dash oh five, approval of distribution of local hospitality tax revenue. Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, make a motion with pass Resolution Oh six, sixteen, oh five. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Resolution passes. Item twenty-four on the agenda, is a motion to enter executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Code Freedom of Information Act, uh, thirty dash four dash seventy, paragraph eight, sub-paragraph one and two, for discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements, receipt of legal advice, discussion of city judges and committee appointments. Is there such a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. You stand in executive session.